If we would show our respect and consideration to the victims and their, and their families.
And also with what's going on in Israel.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Jared, we'll call.
Mr. Earhart, here. Tammy Blaine?
Here.
Cindy Verne?
Present.
Julia Markieppi? Mr. Harley, here. Mr. Kerr?
Present.
Dr. Rig?
Here.
Dr. Shaver?
Here.
Mr. Schrute?
Here. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming out this evening. I do not have a Board President's message. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment? No one signed up for public comment? Uh, I'll buy IAEA or Ask Me. Anybody here from those organizations? Okay, I know we have our gentleman representative from SGA. Would you like to give us a report on the SGA activities?
Yeah, I'll keep it quick. Student Government Association has been pretty busy at the high school. Student Government prepared and held the pep rally on Friday, September 29th, where the homecoming king's court was introduced and Ben Cochran was named homecoming king. We introduced the queen's court during the football game on the same day where Emma Massengau was named homecoming queen. SGA set up and prepared for the homecoming dance, um, which was held on September 30th, and we had 620 students attend the dance, which was the largest number of students to ever attend an IHS dance or homecoming. In addition to SGA events, I would like to note some events that have occurred at the high school in general since the beginning of the school year. Uh, the student ambassador program coordinated the ninth grade orientation in late August, which was really well attended and provided ninth graders an opportunity to meet faculty and staff and to become more familiar with the school. Open house for parents and guardians took place on Thursday, September 14th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. IHS Clubs Program has recently started, which consists of about 30 different and diverse clubs, which is held every Thursday. Uh, the full bike teachers from IUP have been coming to the high school every Wednesday since the beginning of the school year, and their final visit will be this Wednesday, where they will be coordinating cultural fair. This full bike program has been a great opportunity for the foreign teachers to learn more about the American education system, as well as for our students to learn more about different cultures from around the world.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Is there anybody here from STUCO? Nothing heard? Superintendent's report.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. I just wanted to, uh, once again shout out to, uh, Bailey Adams and her crew for the spaghetti dinner fundraiser that was held last week. It was more than just a spaghetti dinner, uh, from what I hear, and several of you attended, I believe. Um, it was quite, uh, the production. There was, uh, there were, uh, bubble dance party, there was a singer, there were, uh, uh, music, there was basket raffle t-shirts, there was a drink station with, uh, you know, the IUP students were there helping. The IUP baseball team came out. I mean, Ms. Adams really went above and beyond to organize a lot of different, um, uh, organizations to come and support this. Uh, the, I keep complacent. River Valley, River Valley, uh, food truck came up with the life skills kids, um, and helped that, and it was, uh, it's quite an event, a successful event. So I just want to thank Ms. Adams and, um, her team for putting on another tremendous event. I was, sorry I couldn't be there myself, um, but I hear it was, uh, an outstanding event. Um, IUP Education Day, the football team will be this Saturday. We're gonna take, um, hopefully, Ms. Adams and, um, Brandy?
Pavlik.
Pavlik, um, thank you, um, to the, they've been invited to go out and flip the coin at, uh, to start the game on Saturday. So we're gonna take them there, hopefully, if they can, if they can arrange it. Um, so, have that going on. We also Band Fest, uh, this Saturday. If you are, um, available, at Senior High School, we'll be, um, hosting all the bands from, uh, throughout the county, um, in a, in a competition event, which is pretty spectacular from what I understand. It's gonna be my first time, but I'm looking forward to it. Um, October is Unity Month, which is Anti-Bullying, Bullying Awareness Month. Each of the schools will be doing different activities to highlight inclusivity and, you know, uh, respect and belonging, those kinds of things at each of the buildings. I think it's the 19th is Unity Day. That's a day where students are encouraged to wear orange as a symbol that they, you know, they, you know, they support inclusivity and, uh, respect for each other and then fight bullying. So, uh, if, uh, just make everyone aware of that. That ties in very nicely with our PADS program, which always is teaching students about, you know, respecting each other's differences and respecting, you know, getting empathy and, and developing that skill of empathy. So, uh, we're happy that, uh, to celebrate October Unity Month. And then, uh, coming up on the 23rd, we've been invited to participate in the American Civics Education and Literacy Initiative, Education Civics Literacy Initiative at, uh, the University of Pittsburgh at Johnson. Several of our teachers have signed up. Um, I myself am going to attend, uh, a little bit of the day. Uh, we've been, uh, Dr. Rabley, who runs the, um, John Murth, the center there, reached out and invited us. And so I'm happy to report that several of our teachers are going out there to work with other teachers from across the community, across the, the tri-county area probably, if not bigger, um, and talk about best practices in civics literacy education. So, we've been, that's been a focus of ours. So, uh, that's coming up on the 23rd. Looking forward to it.
Okay, very good. Thanks, Rob.
Sure.
Ron Slister's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe last meeting I, I gave an update as it relates to the, uh, PDE regulations that came down for special ed students moving the age from 21 to 22, and I said we were looking into it. Uh, PSBA, Pittsburgh Public, couple other big school districts, they did end up filing suit, uh, against the Pennsylvania Department of Education. So, we'll provide an update to the board when we hear back, but they did file for some of the, the items I think I spoke of last meeting about. Not that we, you know, don't agree that, you know, these students need the services, it's the change without the regulatory authority to be able to do so, and that's exactly what they filed suit against. Uh, so again, I'll bring a, bring a report back to the board once we hear, however, that, that suit is decided. Um, and I would say that, um, we do have our bond counsel in the back there, Attorney Brewer, just for those who don't know who he is, but want to at least let you know that he's in the back there in case there's questions at the end.
Very good.
That's all, Mr. President. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, there are no presentations this evening. Uh, we're down to approval of the minutes and the agenda. We moved in second. Questions, comments, uh, discussion on the agenda or the minutes? Nothing heard? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Board reports. I had some technical difficulties with my computer and was not able to check in to the ICTC, but Rob has a report for us.
Yes, sir. Um, the JSC Committee approved, uh, several, uh, conference requests. They made adjustments to the salary, the pay rate for, um, uh, one of the PDE health, um, workers there. They, um, accepted a resignation. They, um, also discussed, um, redirecting some of their ESRS grant money to go more toward, uh, HVAC project that is badly needed up at, uh, the ICTC Center. Um, I think that's really, we had an articulation agreement with St. Francis and, um, and ICTC uh, for some certification and some normal programs, uh, that they have there as well.
Okay, thanks, Rob. Sue, glad you're on, uh, line with us. Is there anything to report from Aaron?
No, we hadn't, we've had no meeting since our last board meeting.
Okay, thank you. Tammy, you're up.
Um, we have not met with the Outreach Committee recently, but, uh, I do have a report from the Indiana Free Library.
So, let me, let me preface those remarks. Um, Josie Cunningham, um, who is, I believe, on the board a- at the library, has requested that we, we have a designated representative, uh, um, who is Tammy there, and so we wanted to try to, um, include them in our, uh, reports, uh, from some of the extra, uh, outside, uh, areas. And I think this is a great idea. The library needs all the help and support it can get. And so Tammy, why don't you go ahead and give us an update on what's going on at the library?
Well, on the 20th of this month is gonna be a Night of Magic Evening at Stacks, a fundraising event at the library, which is always, once a year, it is always a lot of fun to go to. We're gonna have live music, the magician, hors d'oeuvres, um, there's gonna be a silent auction of some really nice, uh, items that you could find on the Indiana Free Library website. And I encourage everybody to check out what they have up there. I also wanted to let you know that there's a bunch, uh, that we have community lectures going on with the local painter Chuck Olson. Starting on October 23rd, he's gonna be talking about famous artist couples and how they've inspired each other's work and how they've developed. Um, they also have a lot of children's programs for all ages and adults, lots of programs. There's yoga, uh, for adults, and, and there's just so many things besides just books with, with them. And I want to point out that there are several story times for the kids as well as STEM toys, puppet play stage. Go and explore.
Okay, thanks, Tammy. We'll look forward to that, um, those reports, uh, from now on. Tom?
Yes, sir.
Academic and extracurricular?
We had a brief meeting on the second. Brian Henninger presented, um, built your options for Costa Rica for the Spanish kids. And the committee recommended we approve that. There was, um, a grant, um, application for the patent grant. And, um, there's $11,000 worth of materials that were shortfall, um, that, that were redlined out of the grant, but we still need them, which is kind of irritating. But, so we got the grant, so we're, committee again has recommended that. Do you want to really like to say a little bit about the patent grant and what it covers?
Yeah, so the, the grant, um, is covering about $39,000 so far at this point, be over, uh, the course of two years. It does cover, uh, professional development. It covers costs of, uh, materials and resources for intervention programs that we've been using, uh, that will make our junior high, uh, more in alignment with what's happening at the elementary school. So, we're fortunate that we have that money. Um, I think the addition of, uh, this will, uh, further the intervention programs we have for the students at junior high.
We also talked about the list of 89 novels for the 3rd through 5th grades, which, um, I hadn't read any of them, but the educators were really excited about it. Committee did talk about them and, uh, uh, wants to approve the $5,000. I recommend that approval. The books varying cost from a couple dollars to nine, seven dollars, and there'd be about 60 copies of each model. The VR headset was an interesting thing. We've had VR headsets available to our students for about a year now. Um, the, uh, um, who, IUP guy, what?
Dr. Lawber.
Dr. Lawber, uh, stole them back.
He stole them back.
And, um, they have been, they have been extremely well used in science, um, um, to do virtual reality, uh, as a pure blood cell. Um, there's, and we're interested in seeing how the teachers would use those. We, uh, recommend, the committee recommends that we buy a classroom set with, with another classroom set in the wings if we can find some grant money or some other ways to purchase it. They have use in science and, and world, world cultures.
Yes.
And we were hoping to get some history, um, uses there. So, making them available with the programming, um, and, and kind of, and introducing them to the, to the curriculum slowly is, is like a foundation.
Yeah, Mrs. Dress and Mrs. Stewart at the high school have already written a grant, um, at least two grants that they've, uh, you know, to try to find some funds for the VR. They're really gonna enhance our science curriculum, I would believe. And world language is another area that they're very excited about, you know, we had the opportunity.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was very nice of Dr. Lawber to loan to us for a year, um, and see who used them, uh, and what they used them for. And when, when he first came in, I thought we'd be playing games with him, but, uh, being a blood cell going through circulation seemed like a really interesting event, so. I'm kind of disappointed they don't make the board do that rather than training. We also discussed extensively the comprehensive plan and where it was going. We had a, we had a really nice summary of a 500-page summary. Uh, the, the summary was two pages. It was great. So, um, we're making some, we're making some beginning motions on getting that ready to go. And then we talked extensively about swimming lessons and some of the options that were, um, were on the table for, for how to get our kids swimming. It turns out that, um, five to 14-year-olds, drowning is the second leading cause of death for those kids. So we're, I'm viewing this as a, as a life skill, a safety issue. And we no longer take our elementary kids to the Y that stopped a decade or so ago. When we looked at doing that, um, of the educators around the table horrified that we didn't make that much time to teach kids to swim, at the same time recognizing the need to decent swim. So we're, we're beginning to explore options of how to use, how to do that and how to use the junior high pool more effectively. That's all I have. Was anything else?
Oh, you did a great job.
Well, write that down. So we have a bunch of motions. 5-2 through discipline agreement, 5-3 special services contract, 5-4 silver lining statement of work. 5-5 is, um, field trip request, 5-6 is SRA materials for the junior high. 5-7 is approval of novels, grade three to five. 5-8 is approval of VR headsets, and 5-9 is the lifeguard agreement. Should we take any of those out?
I have a question about 5-9. On our worksheet, um, about the swimming pool costs, it says the lifeguards are $16,800, and the motion says $16,000. Does it matter that they're?
It's just a mess.
It's a mess. Okay, that's fine.
Okay, questions, comments, or discussion?
Did anybody get one of those taken out? We're good, okay. You did a second. Okay, we're good.
So questions, comments, or discussion on 5-2 through 5-9?
I'd just like to note that we only, we only charge for lifeguards as we use them, so that, you know, that price will vary quite a bit, so.
But the lifeguards are there for every time the kids are in the pool.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, I commented about the VR headsets, um, and we are, we are trying to generate grants for that. So hopefully, we can get them ordered and find somebody else to pay for them, but we want to get them on-site and in use. That's all I have to say. You're good.
Justin, is there anything you'd like to add on the approved, uh, list of novels for grade three to five and why, why this is important?
No, I, I think, um, you know, with the novels, I think, uh, the teachers, uh, have, you know, we reached out to them to get their input. And, uh, their input was that in previous years, um, the, the use of novels was really affected with their kids. So, uh, our point was to listen, to listen, hear them, uh, understand where they're coming from. And I think, and I do think that the novels they've selected line up really, really well with the curriculum that we've selected. So I think it'll be, I think it's, and, and it's not an expensive cost, uh, so I think it's a win-win.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor of approving 5-2 through 5-9 say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's carry. Cindy, what's going on with policy and personnel?
Okay, so, we had a meeting this evening that was entirely, um, a discussion about the swimming pool and the lifeguards, and we've gone ahead and hired the lifeguards, so that's a new point now. The, we've got, uh, motion 6.2, resignation of two paraeducators, Sabrina Davis and Prissa Spencer. We've got 6.3, hiring Abigail Dunn as a paraeducator, and Thomas DeYarmen as a custodian. Uh, motion 6.4, hiring Courtney Henry as a learning support teacher. 6.5, hiring Stephen Shafloff as a long-term secondary ELA substitute teacher. And then we've got six extra duty, extra pay assignments. Casey Williams for the senior high dramatics vocal director, Hillary Hubbard as junior high SGA advisor, Maddie Jones in two positions, one the junior high dramatics show director and the junior high dramatics musical director, Amy Kukula as the junior high dramatics choreographer, and Skylar Nichols as the girls assistant back, basketball coach.
I, I would correct, but 6.4, step two, let's step down. Is that correct?
Yeah, that, that's, yes.
Okay, we have motion?
That's another instructional one. It's step two and then masters plus third.
Correct. Yep.
All those hires will be made available to the press also.
Okay, so, as far as, but I have to make up.
No, you, I just wanted to make sure it was corrected because we didn't say, state that in the motion.
Sure.
So Cindy, you made those motions 6.2 through 6.6?
Yes, please.
Um, second from Terry. Um, questions, comments, or discussion on any of these? Nothing heard? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's carry. Okay, Terry, looks like Williams is in ground next.
No committee meeting report, the update on Eisenhower Elementary. There is a, uh, pre-construction meeting this Wednesday. It's two o'clock, I think. Things will be kicking off there. And then there's some motions here related to Eisenhower. Does anybody want any of the 7.3 to 7.7 pulled out separately?
Carrie, before you get into those, I, I do think we want to point out that, um, the Eisenhower contract, um, the start date on that is October the 17th?
Yes.
And that that's when the 15-month clock will start. So, depending on how the construction meeting goes, uh, on Wednesday, there could be, you know, people and, and material and, and, and equipment starting to show up, um, as of, is it Monday the 17th?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, Tuesday, whatever, whatever day the 16th is, I just wanted to be sure to point, point that out, that you could, the public could, could start to see some activity over there, um, with, uh, with these contracts.
Sure.
Okay. Well, I move 7.2 update on, or, I'm sorry, 7.2 maintenance stories for Eisenhower items, 7.4 land purchase, 7.5 the junior high pool boiler, 7.6 the junior high boiler control panel, and 7.7 clerk of the works for the Eisenhower project. And the name in the motion will read Larry Calvetti, with an estimated monthly cost of $1,500. And once the contracts established.
I was just gonna say, yeah, I would just say pending, um, you know, contract review, just to make sure everything's nailed down on that.
Right.
Um, and I, if it's okay with you, Mr. President.
Yes.
Um, I would just, you know, thank F&amp;D Holdings, which is Lias Tower Tire, um, working with us, you know, working with Jared, getting a contract together, uh, decent price and really kind of fix up that property. So if there's ever any issue in the future, uh, Indiana's good to go. So, again, just thank you to them. It was very easy to work with them.
Great.
And then, and this is sort of a question, I guess. We had discussed in committee also about fixing the leak that's at this swimming pool. Does that need included in this, or?
Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to make, yeah, so that, we had the $15,000.
How do we do that? If, if we want to include, in the committee meeting, we talked about a repairing a leak in it, in the swimming pool, the pipe or something?
Authorize the district to move forward.
Yeah.
Can we just?
I don't think that's a motion. I mean.
We don't need that.
That's something that will come out of.
Maintenance budget.
The maintenance budget, that does not need the board to take notice.
And I will say, I, I apologize, um, I miss this every time. Um, we're gonna have to put like an asterisk or something for this. Um, you guys actually tabled this on the 25th?
Right.
So if you could pull, yeah, it's about, yeah, if you could pull 7.7 separate, pull it off the table and then, and then go down.
Can, can we make that motion?
Well, we'll do 7.3 through 7.6, and then we can do that.
Correct, yeah.
One second.
We need a second.
I'll do that.
Okay, so it's moved in second on 7.3 through 7.6. Uh, questions, comments, or discussion on those four motions?
Yeah, I'd like to add to 7.6 to be, to repair the leak, so that it's on the agenda, so it's on the minutes, so that it happens. And we don't sit here and talk about it for six months.
So you're asking for a friendly amendment?
A friendly amendment, if it's all right with you and Tammy. If not, then I'll have Tom put it as a formal. Okay.
I just, I just want, I just want it written down.
Yeah.
So that Cindy can find it when it does happen.
And I want to thank the teachers that came to the meeting tonight that really explained what this swimming pool is used for and how helpful it is to our students. They really, uh, changed, I think, a lot of minds on the board with the amount of, uh, progress that they make from sixth grade through the students leaving in eighth grade with the amount of students that learn how to swim, so. Great, thank you. And they're, they all were enthusiastic and supportive of, you know, what they're doing, so.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
And the land purchase, I want to say. I almost emailed Jared the other day about, and this was one thing I wanted to try to get off the board, uh, before I leave here in December.
In four years.
I read the, yeah. Agenda, and I was like, whoa, good, good.
So, so just a, a note for the press and for the public. There was a, um, an anomaly in the property lines, uh, between the high school and the, uh, property that Lias Tire uses. Um, it's owned by F&amp;D Holdings. And the fences did not accurately describe the property lines. And so, this was something that was discovered several years ago, and we finally got it worked out. And I too want to thank, uh, the folks over at Lias for their cooperation. What this does is it clears up some of these anomalies, and now the, the fence line will actually be more representative of the actual property lines than it was before. Is that?
Correct, yeah, clears title too.
Clears, clears the title up, um, so it, it's a, a way of avoiding future, future issues, uh, that could, could come up. Are there any other questions, comments, or discussion on those four items? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's carry. Okay, 7.7, we need a motion to take it off the table, and then we can vote on it.
I'd like to have a motion to move 7.7 off the table.
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Okay, all those in favor of, say aye of moving it off the table?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right.
So the motion 7.7, clerk of the works for Eisenhower project. That based on the recommendation of the board committee as a whole, Larry Calvetti be approved as the clerk of the works for the Eisenhower addition Reno project at an estimated monthly cost of $10,500.
And I would just say pending Slister final contract preparation. If that could be added to it.
Yes. Okay, Carrie added it to it, so.
Second.
There is a second? Okay. Questions, comments, or discussion on the clerk of the works? Jared, do, would you like to make any comment on, on the need and the, the value that the clerk brings us?
Yeah, no, we'll absolutely get this, um, moving as soon as possible so that this person will be an integral part as the Eisenhower project is about ready to start. This person will be the district's daily eyes and ears on the project to make sure what was bid out and what the district wanted is actually what we end up with at the end of the project. So it'll be a definite resource to have as the project moves forward over the next 15 months.
If the motion passes, we should invite this individual for Wednesday's meeting.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions, comments, or discussion on 7.7? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right. Audit and finance. Julia, what's going on over there?
Thank you, Mr. President. We did not have a meeting tonight, but I did want to point out, if they, if you didn't read it, there was in our, um, what do you call that document we get every day, what we do for the PSBA?
For our PSBA, there's a lot of emails.
So, this is, uh, there's a charter s- school bill outstanding in Penns- in the State House. It's passed the State House. It's called, um, 4211. And it's a charter, it's a, it's a cyber school bill. And, um, it's looking for accountability with cyber schools and to place a tuition cap on the public schools. And it goes to the Senate where they're expecting, um, more of a, uh, difficulty passing it. So, just wanted, you should read the article. It was in today's, it's, if I So, just one, you should read the article, it was in today's, it's on Channel twenty-one. It gives an example of what they're saying with the school district by the name West Shore School District, who currently has seventy-five hundred kids and they're paying out eight point five million dollars a year in cyber school costs. This would reduce their liability if it goes through unchanged without amendment one-four-two-two. It looks like they would be saving, or not paying out two million dollars a year, so that would reduce their overall bill. So, it's, I, I personally have looked into it today, I spent some time reading about it, I hope it passes the state senate, it's desperately needed, I think, not just for our district or districts across the Commonwealth. So, I urge you to read the article. In addition to that, we have a couple of motions tonight to pass. The first one is, Jared, I usually ask you if we have any unusual things in the approval of bills eight point two. You indicated that might be this month, so I wonder if you could address that.
Yeah, I think one that stands out a little extraordinary in this month's bills is there is a, a payment to Indiana Borough for almost a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. That is the building permit fee for the Eisenhower project. So, if it is in, if approved tonight, that will be sent to the borough so that we can pick up our building permit to start construction as early as next week. So, it is a little out of the ordinary, just in case, you know, any programmers had questions, I wanted to make sure that was pointed out. Everything else is a normal slate of bills.
Okay, so then I'll move the approval of bills, be approved as submitted.
Second. We have moved in second, questions, comments, or discussion on approving the bills? I do have to make a little bit of a comment. I'm a little concerned about this fee that we're paying the borough. We are a tax, taxpayer organization, just like they are. You know, I would have hoped we could have gotten some better consideration in this fee that we have to pay them, you know, for the construction. And that's, that's all I'm going to say about it. Anybody else?
Okay. There is nothing for nonprofits or in municipal code or anything?
I will say, I'm surprised to see how high it is for a municipality to municipality, but there, the fee is kind of a fee.
What they're charging us is their standard fees.
Correct.
We certainly, we certainly can have the right to ask them to reconsider.
Yeah, but the fee, you're right.
Yeah. Because when I was Penn Dot Permanent Engineer, HOPs were free to government organizations and municipalities.
Don't let them hear about this. Don't let them hear about this.
You know, Terry, to be fair, I understand that part of the fee is, is justified because there will be code enforcement work here where they're going to send inspectors out to also make sure that the project meets the code. And so, you know, yes, we should bear those costs. But that's only a portion of, of that fee. And, and I would have hoped that we could have had a better deal from the, from the borough based on the fact that we are a, a school district. We are maintaining a building in the borough, which is very desirable to the borough. And you know, this is a twenty-one million or whatever the final construction numbers were, investment in the borough. And we're all, you know, taxpayers and taxpayer organizations, and I would, I would have hoped they could have been a little kinder to us.
But, to be fair, they did, they did bump the standard rates down about sixty-seven thousand dollars. At the same time I say that, their, their way that they charge for building fees is not really geared up for a twenty-one million dollar project. It's geared up for much smaller projects. We're paying almost four times as much for renovated space as we are for new space. And, and I would like the borough to revisit that. It discourages, quite frankly, rehabilitation of existing buildings, which is what mainly happens in the borough. But it's also, when, when you look at, when the projects are smaller, the numbers, the numbers are more reasonable in the amount of time that they actually spend there. This is a twenty-one million dollar project, it's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, there's not going to be an inspector, that's, that's the price of our, of our clerk of the works. There's not going to be an inspector on this job forty hours a week. So, I hope that, I, I hope that at some point we can convince the borough to move forward with this.
Any other comments on this? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, bond issues.
So, yeah, we, we spoke about this at the last board meeting, the last committee meeting, and we agreed, there was a vote that night, last board meeting. Wasn't there? Yeah.
Yes, just proceeding with.
To proceed with, okay, motion proceed. Tonight, as, as Mr. Repex said, we do have bond counsel with us. Do you want to stand up and say hello, please?
Hello, please.
That's what we need.
Deputy Rob, Chris Brewer from the Department of Sports, good to see you all again. The resolution that our office prepared that has been mentioned is one that would authorize the next borrowing for the project. As you've been doing in the direction that you've had from public financial management, the plan is to issue up to ten million in this tranche. That will hopefully get you just about near the annual line. And next year, as the project unfolds and you see where costs come in and make a decision about, you know, your own contributions and so forth, with maybe one wrap-up final financing. But for now, ten million gets you the better bank-qualified rates, that is to say that banks are within the universe of investors. And that is an expectation, and it adjusts a slight lower interest rates from the bids. Public financial management is working with our office and the administration and the solicitors to get the bids in on the eighteenth of October. That timeline is based on some different things in terms of getting ratings and getting funding, getting official statements ready for bidders. It's also an attempt to get ahead of whatever the Federal Reserve has in mind for November and December in terms of interest rates. Hold the line here, get you some, you know, decent price. This document is consistent with ones we've prepared before. It is a, you know, tax-backed obligation, but there's nothing about what it does for your financial failure that's any different from the other debt that you've incurred. So, this document authorizes filings with state, informs all the debt act requirements that govern how you borrow this kind of money, and sets outside covenants and provisions for the bond issue. So, if you're ready to move forward on the project, you need some more money, then this is what you should, of course, consider tonight. Questions for me on the legal side?
Yeah, it's, you said.
Oh, yeah, let me, let me say that.
Up to ten, and this says twelve?
Twelve, yes, thank you, I had that in my head and slipped out. So, we've done this before, just the same way. Under the Pennsylvania's Local Debt Act, when we take actions like this, we're trying to maximize flexibility, hit your regular ordoning for the month, so we don't have to have a special, but schedule a sale when market conditions look right. So, rather than getting a bid in next, or on the eighteenth, and then calling you into a special meeting to set us, accept this bid, we authorize maximum parameters, which doesn't fit very well in this new, not new practices, been the way we've been doing it the last dozen years, but newer than the debt act, the debt act was written in nineteen seventy-two. And so, the way it was written and how the business runs and operates today in public finance is a little different. State told us, all law councils, all issuers, if you're going to authorize a not-to-exceed pre-authorization of debt like this, rather than final terms and conditions, you need a maximum principal amount, need maximum interest rates, we don't expect to hit the rates that are listed in here. And, and here's the, the tough part, the maximum amount of principal that will mature and be paid each and every year. They were looking at some nuanced language in the act about your annual appropriation, financial annual budget. And so, the additional restrictions, not just to pick ten million, which would be a safe number and some high interest rates, but that each and every year in the schedule, and if you had it on your laptops and so forth, there's a schedule of what's expected to come due each and every year during the term of the issue. When public financial management designs this, they've got to leave a little space every single year in the principal payment that's due. And when you do that, then the expected ten million grows to leave room every single year. Why do we leave that room? Because interest rates move in. Your debt on this issue is configured into your other debt. And although a bond issue is maybe a little more complex than a home mortgage, principal and interest is the same thing on all these kinds of borrowings, parlor, home mortgage, whatever. Your rate goes up, pay down principal more slowly. The rate comes down, you can amortize a little more quickly. So, they've taken a snapshot based on market conditions where they think this will come in, but left some room. And so, we are stating that we might issue up twelve million only because every one of those dollar amounts per year add up to a bigger number than ten. But we have a provision in the resolution that says, no matter where the bids come in, and no matter where they've got to structure the amortization, this is still being done with an expectation that we're going to preserve, character the bonds under section two sixty-five B three of the tax code. Don't mean to belittle either, that's the section of the income, the rental revenue code, it governs the ten million dollar issue and how it is handled, or how it's accounted for by investors. So, got to draw the picture bigger and then color it in the line.
So, if the, we put twelve million dollars and we put these bonds out and they come in at ten million, five hundred thousand, or eleven million? How does that?
Bidders will just bid rates. Bidders will bid interest rates. And they know when they bid, we're going to hold the par in that ten million dollar range. So that on a final award, they'll, they'll get just the ten million at the rates that they've bid for. Other words, the invitation to bid is written such a way that, give us your rates, and we, the finance team up here at PFM, will be telling the bidders, here's where the maturities fall, here's the amounts. And there's, I, I think the way the RFP is written, we can vary the amount per year like up to a million dollars, it's a very wide margin. The bidders are used to this. They're not going to be troubled by the idea that they'll put in a bid, see a preliminary number that might say there's going to be three hundred thousand dollars maturing in the year twenty twenty-nine, and in fact, it'll come back at three ten thousand, or it'll come back at two ninety-five. They would expect that kind of variation. What they're doing is, they're going out before they place a bid, like any other contractor, and sort of gauging interest rates in the market, what they think they can sell the bonds at. You know, the bidders that come in, the investment bankers are not buying these bonds to own them, they're buying them to, to broker them to their investor base. So, if they think that they can sell three hundred thousand in the twenty twenty-nine maturity, and it comes in at two ninety-five, they'll find a home for it. If it's three-ten, they got to take it. They won't have actual sales orders against their bid, but they'll have an expectation where they're going to place bonds. Without making it seem too easy, because it isn't, it's a lot of money, it's a lot of work for everybody, including the bidders, but we do it regularly.
Any other questions for Chris?
This is like class. How do you say, Madam Vice President, we asked the same question, just wanted, yeah, that's right. We have that response, that's why, that's why he does what he does.
When we do file, though, even though this is twelve million, when we do file the DCD for approval, it will be precise to whatever that bid is. So, your debt statement and your incurrence of debt won't be twelve, it'll be that precise number.
Well, I have a couple of questions, but should I wait till after the motion?
No, I think you can, if you want to have questions, Chris, go ahead and ask them now.
So, when do you, when would we be responsible to start making payments on this?
I think, on the same side, we are paying all your bond issues now, I think the first payment is slated for February of twenty-four, February fifteenth of twenty-four. Investors expect interest payments every six months. And so, that's about as far as we would, you know, push it.
Yeah, and then the reason I'm asking too, I guess we want to take advantage of possibly the lower interest rates that we're doing this money now, even though we have money on hand, that we can start the project and fund it sometime into middle or next year, or even the end of next year possibly, or something.
Yeah, maybe as soon as we get this money on hand, which should probably be sometime in November, we will invest what we can. It's also our interest on it as well.
Yeah, in that regard, we have seen such low rates for such a long time, and we're now back to what was really a much more historic pattern in the marketplace where, since investment, interest rates have come up, that means you're borrowing at a higher, more expensive level than you might have borrowed two years ago. But so is your investment opportunity. And in the, in the historic classic market for municipal finance, remember, you're borrowing at so-called tax-free rates. Investors keep the interest income without paying up to say many tax on it, because you're a governmental body. So, it is possible for you to borrow this money at a lower rate and go back out in the marketplace and invest it till it's spent for construction at a higher rate. And given some of the nuances of the tax law, you will, in this case, get to keep that. It's a school construction issue under fifteen million in the calendar year, you'll get to keep that if you can earn it, above and beyond, you know, what the cost was. Now, money borrowed, you're paying for an extended period of time, and those rates are with you, the investment won't be with you that long. For the short run, we can't tell you that it's a bad idea not to go ahead and get it in the bank, because you can make some money on it. The other things at play here, we already mentioned the ten million dollar limit on so-called bank-qualified bonds, fifteen million dollar limit on keeping the profit. Those are annual limits. And so, I think part of the planning here is to go ahead and get this financing completed in twenty twenty-three, so the slate is clean for twenty twenty-four, for the wrap-up financing, whatever else you can do. If you were to not do this now and do it in twenty twenty-four, then we have to make it, I have a client right now that's going to go over ten million. I think for some months, because, you know, sort of missed the opportunity and the need to get the money and wrap it up. And it doesn't mean it's bad, it just means that it doesn't have very significant advantage that we're trying to get for you by doing this now.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, anybody else?
And that was exactly the point we wanted to say. The Fed signaled they may raise rates again, so we want to try to get in. A little bit of an arbitrage there doesn't hurt.
I always hesitate to use that word, but arbitrage is making money between markets. You can borrow tax-free and go to the side of the market.
It's nice, it's been good, it's been good, but now that rates are up a little bit.
Thanks, thanks, Chris, appreciate it.
So, I'd like to move, if there's no more questions, then based.
Go ahead and make your motion, Julia, we can discuss.
Based on the recommendation of the Audit and Finance Committee, the board approves the resolution authorizing the occurring of non-electoral debt by the issuance of general obligation bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed twelve million dollars, covenanting to pay and pledging all available taxing power for the payment of the bonds, fixing the from, the form, maximum interest rates, maturity, redemption, and other provisions for the payment thereof, authorizing the acceptance of one or more proposals for the purchase of the bonds, authorizing a filing, required documents for the department, with the Department of Community and Economic Development ratifying and directing certain actions of officers and making certain other agreements and provisions in respect to the bonds.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further questions, comments, or discussion on eight point three? Nothing heard, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, we have one no with Terry. Okay, motion carries. We're now down to the closing. There are no discussion items, is there any public comment on agenda items? One, two, three, nothing heard. We had some enclosures. We had a notice of executive session, Ron, will you want to brief us on our executive session?
Sure, Mr. President. We did talk about the purchase of Elias Tower Tire, the hirings that showed up on the agenda for personnel matters. And we did interview clerk of the works, which also showed up on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Our next board meeting will be a special meeting on October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three at seven PM. Our next committee meetings are outreach and buildings and grounds at five and five-thirty respectively, and audit and finance on October twenty-third. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we stand adjourned, thank you all.